So, I am going to, if we're all set. Dawn, you good?
Yeah.
We're good. Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order then. It's 7:05, or 7:06 according to my calendar, my clock here. So apologies for the delay. At this time, though, I'll ask councillors and those present to stand for Canada, please. Okay. Thanks, everyone. So I'll ask for CIO to do the roll call for councillors.
Councillor Sean Sampson.
Present.
Deputy Warden Michael Diggden.
Present.
Councillor Melanie Sampson.
Warden Amanda Mumberkett.
Present.
Councillor Brent Sampson.
Present.
Okay. So, I will begin with any items added to the agenda. So do councillors have items they would like to add this evening? Councillor Melanie Sampson?
Just wanted to provide some information on oily waste sites in a notification that we received today to share with constituents.
Okay. So could I have an indication of consent to add oily waste sites? All councillors have indicated their consent for that. All right. Thank you. Additional... Sorry, Councillor Sean, your mic was on there.
Yep. Yeah. So can I add just a discussion on arena rates?
Arena rates? Okay.
Yes, please.
So could I have an indication of consent from councillors to add arena rates discussion to the agenda? Okay. We have unanimous consent on that. All right. And I would also like to add an agenda about the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health awards that have just been launched. So if it's just an information piece, so if councillors could indicate their consent for that as well. Okay. Thank you. Any further items? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I just have a brief one to add, I guess, for the testing, for the COVID testing.
COVID testing? Okay. All right. Could I have an indication of consent to add COVID testing to the agenda? Okay. We have unanimous consent for that as well. All right. Any further items to add? Okay. So with those additions, could I please have a motion to approve the agenda? Councillor Melanie?
I move the amended agenda.
Thank you. Could I have a second on that? Deputy Warden?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. So that motion is carried. Okay. So we have two sets of minutes that were circulated in the meeting package for this evening. So the first is the September 27, 2021 regular council meeting minutes. And were there any errors or omissions noted on those? Councillor Brent Sampson?
Just waiting for it to load, but I believe that was the ones might have stated it was in chambers, but I think it was a video conference.
So the minutes that I'm looking at say video conference?
Oh, no. Okay. Location, council chambers underneath. Under the date.
Oh, yes. I see. Yep. Down below. Okay. So September 27 meeting was video conference. Yeah. 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 So if we could get the location changed to read video conference. Any further errors or omissions? Okay. So could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please? From September 27? Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Brent Sampson?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. So that motion is carried. Next are the minutes from October 4. This was a special meeting, also conducted by video conference. So are there any errors or omissions noted on these minutes? Okay. So hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the special council meeting of October 4? Councillor Brent Sampson?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the September 4 meeting, or was it October?
October.
October 4th meeting.
Yeah. Thank you, Councillor Brent. Deputy Warden?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. So any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is the election of the deputy warden. So maybe I'll hand this over to the CIO to... Yeah. Okay. Yvonne's going to pass out some ballots. So the deputy warden is a position that's elected each year at the council table from amongst the councillors, putting their names forward. But Dawn, are you, did you want to walk us through this, or how did you? Yeah, we need to do it.
I think we need nominations.
Yes, exactly.
May not be no need to...
Yeah. Okay. Great. Okay. So would anyone like to make a nomination for the position of deputy warden? Deputy Warden?
I'd like to nominate Councillor Melanie Sampson.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any further nominations, Councillor Sean Sampson? Sorry? Oh, yes. Sorry. Councillor Melanie Sampson, do you wish to accept the nomination? I'm moving along at light speed here this evening. I feel like I'm still in a rush from the last meeting. Thank you, Melanie. All right. Are there any further nominations? Okay. Are there any further nominations from the floor? Any further nominations for the position of deputy warden? Okay. So hearing none, we have one name put forward, and it's Councillor Melanie Sampson. Do you wish to accept the position of deputy warden at this time?
I will.
Okay. So I guess, that being said, there's no need to do any voting, and we'll call it a day. All right. Congratulations and thank you, Councillor Melanie. And thank you, Noah.
Great work. Great work.
All right. So we'll move us forward on the agenda. So the next item is a question period, which is restricted to items on the Committee of the Whole report. We do have a phone number to call in, and we'll wait a couple minutes to see if there's any questions regarding that report. The report and the items on the Committee of the Whole are all listed in the agenda package. So I'll just wait a minute or two. I do think we need music for this portion of the agenda, truly. Okay. So that number was 902-226-9885. Okay. So I'm not hearing the phone ringing. We've waited a minute or two, and so I think I'll move us on to our committee reports. So first committee report is Committee of the Whole. So I'll hand it over to... The new deputy warden. Okay. Great. All right. So Councillor Melanie's, or sorry, Deputy Warden Melanie Sampson, it's over to you.
I wasn't really prepared for this part, but here we go. This is the Committee of the Whole report for the month of October 2021. The committee met on October 12, 2021. The committee discussed J-Class roads. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the motion adopted at the October 4, 2021 special council meeting be amended in order to revise the list of roads to be submitted by staff to the Department of Public Works from the list of nine to the following. One, Lobster Plant Road, Capoguet, paving and culverts. Two, Langley Lane, Point Tupper, paving and culverts. Three, Sampson's Road, West Lardwas, paving and culverts. Four, Marshawn Lane, Lewesdale, culverts and repaving.
Okay. So we have a motion from the deputy warden regarding the J-Class road discussion at Committee of the Whole. Could I have a second on that motion? Councillor Diggden?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. So any further discussion on that item? Okay. So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. So that motion is carried. Thank you. Back to you, Melanie.
The committee discussed the appointment of a commissioner. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that Mr. John Bain, Director of the Eastern District Planning Commission, be appointed as the commissioner on the current private ways application.
Okay. So the motion is made. Could I have a second on that motion? Councillor Sampson?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried. Deputy Warden?
The committee discussed the Strait of Canso Gateway project. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the municipality of Richmond County provide funding in the amount no greater than $5,000 to the Strait of Canso Gateway project contingent on the majority of other municipalities following suit.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second on that? Councillor Sean?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the Acting Collectively project. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the municipality complete a call for expression of interest with the support of the Seniors Take Action Coalition regarding the Acting Collectively project.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second for that? Councillor Diggden?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried.
The committee discussed a vaccination policy. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that staff draft a vaccination policy for review at a future policy bylaw committee meeting.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second, please? Councillor Brent?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the CBREN contribution agreement. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the Cape Breton Regional Enterprise Network Contribution Agreement renewal be circulated to councillors for review and be brought back to the October 25, 2021 regular council meeting for approval.
We have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second, please? Councillor Diggden?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Sorry. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried.
The committee discussed grant requests. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the grant request from the Isle Madame Ifit Centre Society be approved in the amount of $2,000, with $1,000 allocated from district fund number one and $1,000 from district fund number two.
I feel like these should be handled individually. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Yeah. Okay. So could I have a second on that motion? Councillor Sean?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried.
I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the grant request from Raising the Villages Cooperative Limited be approved in the amount of $2,500 and be allocated from the Type IV Regional Health General Grant Funds.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second, please? Councillor Sampson?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried.
I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the grant request from Waterway Economic Development be approved and allocated as follows. $2,500 from the Regional Health General Grant Funds, $2,500 from district number four, $500 from each of the remaining four districts, 1, 2, 3, and 5, total $2,000.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second, please? Councillor Diggden?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah. I'm looking forward to seeing this project move forward, but I did have some concerns as we discussed in our policy bylaw committee meeting, but I feel much more comfortable with it now. Some of the wording, you know, we weren't 100% sure on just in the policy, and I think hopefully we've moved to clear that up. This will make for future projects a little easier for us to make sure we're on the right page.
Thank you, Councillor Brent. Councillor Diggden?
Yeah. Madam Warden, maybe just for clarification, I know it's broke down, but at the bottom line, it says 500 from each district, total of 2,000. We just want to make sure that the clarification is the total allotted, wasn't 2,000, but from them four districts, it's 2,000.
Yes, that's right. That was correct. Yep. Thank you. Councillor Diggden? So I was hoping I could ask the council's indulgence on maybe providing a little bit of information. It was brought to my attention by a constituent that the recording of the presentation that I had done about this Committee of the Whole, I hadn't pressed my button when I switched seats. And so when it aired, I don't think people could quite hear, and I see Becky nodding her head on that one. So if it's okay with council, I would like to just kind of recap a couple of the points about this project, just in the interest of transparency, so the public is informed about what we talked about then. So thank you. Seeing nodding heads. So regarding this grant application, staff had originally communicated to the applicant that the organization, the grant application basically didn't fit the policy, and I think to Councillor Brent's point earlier, we'll be making, you know, some adjustments with the wording of that. However, the application, I just wanted to be clear, is not for infrastructure work to be completed. It is to fund an RFP that will result in the creation of a preliminary conceptual redevelopment plan for the St. Peters Canal Boardwalk Trail and public spaces. The RFP and any resulting conceptual plan would be the property of Waterway Economic Development. They're not proposing any construction at this point, simply a plan which they would own in order to obtain any kind of permit or letter of authority, that type of thing from Parks Canada or any other landowner. They would need this plan to demonstrate the value of the project, so it really is a critical piece moving forward. Given that the clause in our policy currently technically doesn't directly apply to the end result of this particular request, I felt that council should have the opportunity to discuss it, and I think that councillors agreed. I do want to let you know that I did do some extra diligence on this, and I requested and received correspondence from their lawyer to confirm that Waterway Economic Development Limited is registered under the province of Nova Scotia and that the nature of the business is not-for-profit development, just in case anybody had questions about that as well. So thanks for your indulgence on that. I really appreciate it. I was disappointed that the original recording hadn't been picked up with the audio, so... Which is my fault completely, because I probably forgot to press the button. All right. So is there any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried.
The committee discussed properties completely destroyed by fire. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that taxes in the amount of $112.60 for 2020 and $186.24 2021 be written off, which represents taxes on the dwelling only from August 21, 2020 to March 31, 2022 for property AAN 01363808, owned by Michelle Demers Kennedy, which was completely destroyed by fire.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Councillor Brent?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that item? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried.
I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that taxes in the amount of $284.37 be written off, which represents taxes on the dwelling only from July 8, 2021 to March 31, 2022 for property AAN 02499584, owned by Lisa LeBlanc, which was completely destroyed by fire.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second on that? Councillor Diggden?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried.
The committee discussed a temporary borrowing resolution. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the municipality enter into a loan agreement with the lending institution in the amount of $300,000 for the purpose of the St. Peters and District Volunteer Fire Department, purchasing a 2021 Ford F-550 4x4 with a TriStar 12-foot custom aluminum rescue body.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Could I have a second? Councillor Brent?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the workplace wellness policy. I move that council accept the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole and that the workplace wellness policy be forwarded to the Policy Bylaw Committee for review.
We have a motion on the floor. Councillor Sean?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
So any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried.
All right. This concludes the Committee of the Whole report for the month of October 2021, and I move its adoption.
All right. We have a motion to adopt the Committee of the Whole report. Could I have a second, please? Councillor Diggden?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. That was a long one. Great job, Deputy Warden, your first Committee of the Whole report. And it was a doozy.
Go figure, saying aye.
Whatever. Okay. So I'm going to ask the deputy warden to maybe turn her mic off, and I'll hand things over to Councillor Brent Sampson regarding the Fire Services Committee report.
Richmond County Fire Services Steering Committee report. After breaking for the summer months, the committee has met once this fall to discuss the direction going forward and future plans. It was a productive meeting in which Deputy Warden Diggden and myself were given a series of questions from members to which we will respond with answers from staff. Dry hydrants remain a topic of conversation, to which we updated progress on that issue in that it is working its way through Policy Bylaw Committee. Expectations of insurance rate increases this coming year are serious concern for already cash-strapped departments. There was also interest in looking into possible further bulk buying options in order to save costs. Discussion was had regarding the funding model for fire departments currently being undertaken in Picto County. We've long known that multiple fire departments within Richmond County will be unable to survive long term, given the financial, current financial model for funding. Therefore, I move that we ask staff to investigate how to enact recommendation number 39 from the Fire Services Review, which reads as follows. Number 39 GA recommends that funding for fire departments should come from a general taxation rate. The rationale is that fire emergency services benefit everyone in the county, and everyone should pay an equal amount.
Okay. So we have a recommendation on the floor. I guess, Councillor Brent, you'd like to just open for discussion at this time? Is that...
Yeah. I'd make that motion.
You're making the motion? Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor. So could I have a second on that? Councillor Diggden?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay. So further discussion? Oh, yeah. We've got Councillor Melanie?
So at the Fire Services meeting, the idea of a singular rate was discussed, and they felt it...
I would say it wasn't unanimous, but it was by far the majority that would like to look into this, at least. Because I think they're very much understanding that there's at least three to four departments that are struggling now, and it's, you know, we're not given a hard timeline, but it's, there's not a sustainable future for them going forward.
Thank you, Councillor Brent. And so I guess, so the motion is basically to look into this. This is not to set it, right? So that, so we're, just to be clear for the public, I certainly would want to make that really clear. So this is an investigation being proposed now?
Yeah. I was moving that we ask staff to investigate how to enact recommendation number 39.
Yeah. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Councillor Diggden?
Yeah. And I was just going to elaborate a little bit on Councillor Sampson's discussion. It's more or less to see, I guess, what avenues we have and, you know, the difference possibly in the rate, whether it be just, for an example, for the people watching, whether it be 11 cents, 12 cents, 13 cents, 9 cents, just maybe, I guess, the factor of where the money would lie in each district and how it would be distributed.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Diggden. Any further discussion on that? Okay. So all those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right. The motion is carried. Thank you, Councillor Brent.
The committee is set to meet again on November 24, 2021. This concludes the Fire Services Committee report.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need a motion to adopt that report? Yeah. Okay. Councillor Brent?
I move that we adopt the Fire Services Steering Committee report.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have a second around that? Counselor Diggden?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Melanie?
I'd just request that maybe the report be circulated to counselors, because I don't think it was attached to our package.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Counselor Brent, you could maybe send that to Yvonne, or she has it. Okay, great. Oh, yeah, great, yeah, perfect, that's awesome. All right, so Yvonne will circulate that to counselors. Thank you very much, Counselor Brent Sampson, and Counselor Diggden as well for your work on that committee. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the second reading approval to amend bylaw number fifty, municipal emergency management bylaw, in order to make a series of changes that were listed directly on the agenda. And the amended bylaw is included in the meeting package as well, so you can see the full context. Could I have a motion to approve the second reading for, as presented, for bylaw fifty? Counselor Diggden? Oh, sorry, Counselor Sampson.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, Counselor Diggden?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so now we'll head to the next items on the agenda, which goes to the C A O regarding a couple of items, first with Destination Cape Breton Member-at-Large.
So we advertised for a member-at-large as instructed by council. We have, we have one individual who applied. As you can see, it's provided in your, in your package, Cindy Walker.
Okay.
So there, there really isn't much discussion there, I guess.
Yeah, and, you know, and I will say that I've had conversations with our current representative, who is Lisa Boudreaux, and she has, you know, indicated to me that she enjoyed her time on the Destination Cape Breton Board. She does have some family commitments that are going to take her away this year, and so, you know, she was, she was, you know, willing to kind of step back from that role if that was the desire of council, and it looks like we have one other person who has put their name forward. So any discussion by counselors on that? Counselor Melanie?
I guess I just wanted to say that if we only got one application, this was a pretty good one.
I think so, too.
I was quite impressed with Cindy's background in terms of, in terms of tourism, and I'm just, I'm looking forward to, to what she'll bring to, what she'll bring to the position at the Destination Cape Breton Board.
All right, thank you, Counselor Melanie. Counselor Sean?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Deputy Warden Melanie said, looking at Cindy's resume and being involved in the tourist business myself, industry, I mean, yeah, it's great to have her on board, and I thank her for applying and look forward to working with her. I also want to thank Lisa Boudreaux for her past commitments and efforts. Lisa's always been a great leader in this community and involved in tourism, so I just wanted to thank Lisa as well.
Well said. Counselor Sean, thank you. Counselor Brent?
I was just going to make the motion that we accept.
Thank you.
We accept Cindy Walker as the Representative-at-Large for the Destination Cape Breton Member.
Thank you very much, Counselor Brent. Counselor Diggden?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So any further discussion on that item?
Question?
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried, so we'll welcome Cindy Walker as our representative on the Destination Cape Breton Board of Directors, and I'm assuming, Dawn, that staff will reach out to her to follow up with that? Okay, that's great, thank you. Okay, back to you.
As indicated in the committee of the whole report, we were asked to provide the intermunicipal agreement regarding the C B R E N organization, and you folks have had it, so I think all we really require is to have signatures placed on that, on that intermunicipal agreement and forward it back to.
Carla.
Yeah, Carla.
Okay, so I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to review it, and I think, you know, we already discussed at the last meeting that budgetary-wise, we had already made, you know, this is applying to this fiscal year, and we've already made that decision from a budget perspective, so could I have a motion then to sign, to have maybe the Warden sign the C B R E N contribution agreement? Counselor Sean?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Deputy Warden?
I will second that.
Thank you very much. So any further discussion on that item?
Question?
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. So Dawn, back to you.
So as you all may be aware, we endeavored with a few other municipal units to, to have the E D P C coordinate the regional planning project set out by provincial legislation, mandatory planning, and they chose Upland Planning Design, Planning Plus Design Studio to undertake that project. I was in touch with the lead, I think she's the, I think she calls herself the manager, her name is Ryan, and part of the, part of the process, part of the beginning of the process is to have them come present to council. And they're, they prefer to have it done sooner than later, so their timeline is to have it done by the first week of November. We would have liked to have them on the Committee of the Whole meeting as a, as a presentation, however, we have two presentations there. However, we do have a special council meeting set up for the first, so I was just looking at, trying to see if council would, would be okay with having that presentation at that meeting. They really, really want to have this prior to the eighth of November. They're a little behind initially, they wanted to have it done a little earlier, but there were some scheduling issues with other municipalities as well, so they pushed it ahead to around the first week of November, and if we can have it on the first, we'll be basically right on target, so. And they can come in and provide us an overview of the project, and you can, you folks will have an opportunity to ask them any questions.
Okay, so this recommendation from staff, then I guess, is to have a presentation be the starting point from Upland Planning and Design, be the starting point for our November first special council meeting. Counselor Brent?
Do we need a motion of that effect, then?
Not necessarily, it would be just, you know, just to let you know, I mean, we don't normally have, yeah, we don't normally have a presentation during council, so I just wanted to run it by you folks, just to make sure it was okay to do that.
I mean, I think that would be really great. This is, I think, a critical piece.
It's very important, it'll be a very important presentation.
Yeah. Counselor Diggden?
Is there any chance maybe, and Dawn, you might be able to reach out to get any literature on it prior to the meeting, just so that, because you said if we have questions to ask, it might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the folks at Upland and see if there's, I think there is, there is a handout that they provide, I'm pretty sure, and there's like a slide, not a slideshow, but I'm sure there's a presentation that they put on the computers as well, so obviously they'll have that in advance and for you guys to, to review it prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you. So it looks like we've got agreement to, to have that at the beginning of our meeting. Thank you, Dawn, for bringing that forward. Okay, so the next item on our agenda then is, I have a few items to discuss. The first is that it's been a year, so I'm not sure where the year went, but I feel like it just passed by in the blink of an eye. This is really our first meeting in our second year as a, as a council, and I just wanted to kind of take a minute to reflect on some of the things that have, that have occurred, and, you know, just wanted to, I guess, offer counselors the opportunity to discuss, you know, because I think we've, we've marched on from meeting to meeting, and we kind of might forget some of the, you know, the little stuff, and I mean, I can't, you know, I don't want to talk about everything, but just wanted to kind of mention a couple key things, like our accountability measures, re-establishing question period, and to council agendas, doing the live stream options, so the folks at home can watch in real time, you know, adding the action items for review to our agendas. We worked through our first budget together, which was a big, you know, a brand-new process for all of us. We've introduced new policies and bylaws. We just had another great bylaw and policy committee meeting this evening, so, you know, we're working towards the best interests of the county. We did some investigation on, on the tax rule, we've passed proclamations to observe things like Access Awareness Week and World Elder Abuse Awareness, and I see that Counselor Sean Sampson is wearing his mask and.
Masked evolve.
Yeah, so, oh, and Becky over there as well, from Talal, so, so just, I think it's really important to recognize things like that, things like the Right to Know Week, so that, you know, they're not just about a week, but they're things we think of all year-long. You know, I have to say that coming to that historic ten-year agreement on the Fire Services for Point Tepper was, was a highlight, certainly for, for me, and I just, you know, wanted to mention a committee that I'm particularly proud of is our Richmond County Accessibility Advisory Committee, which, you know, the Village of Saint Peters has joined, and so there's been lots going on, and I just wanted to, I guess, ask counselors if you have any plans to do any kind of a one-year or a year-end review, maybe to share them with all of us so that, so that we can kind of all benefit from, you know, the insight of each other's reflections on the last year, so. Any comments or questions on that? Counselor Melanie? Or, sorry, Deputy Warden? I'll get it right, sorry.
It's all good. So this past week, I actually did a, like a roundtable discussion with, with Adam to be, to be aired later, I think probably this week sometime, and we did talk a little bit about the year-end review, and one of the things that I told him, and I, I'd like to share it, I think, at the table, is one of the things I think I'm most proud of is how we behave as a council, and how we are able to come to the table, and we're able to have conversations that we don't necessarily all agree on, that we listen to each other's point of view, and, and that when we leave at the end of the night, we're typically joking and laughing as we go out to our cars, and I really value that piece in each and every one of, of our counselors and also our staff, and how we're able to always find a bit of a common ground, no matter what we do. So I just, I guess I wanted to say a thank you to everyone for that, and for me, that's probably what I'm the most proud of. I think with attitude like that, we're going to get pretty far.
Well said, Deputy Warden. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council on that? Counselor Sean?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on Deputy Warden's comments. If you go back to our debate at Talal, I had said if I was to give us all advice, it would be to not stop campaigning after the election. So like Counselor Melanie said, we come here and we campaign our ideas, and we can campaign our opinions, and we do it respectfully, and we do it for the best interest of Richmond County. So again, I want to applaud us and, and thank you all. It's been a pleasure, and, yeah, I'm very confident that we'll keep this going in year two and for the rest of our term, so. Also want to thank Becky and Dennis Talal, and also thank our media for always following us and, and keeping Richmond County informed of what's going on around this table, so thank you all, and look forward to working with you in year two.
Great point, Counselor Sean, thank you. So I mean, I know, I recognize we've done some really great things, but I think we all would recognize there's still a whole lot more to do and things we could be doing better, so, so year two is, is an opportunity for us to do that, so thanks, oh, sorry, Counselor Diggden?
Yeah, no, I guess I'm just going to follow in the backs of the new Deputy Warden and Counselor Sean Sampson, and again, I agree one hundred percent, you know, we counseled and we, we worked hard to get where we're at today, and, you know, every day, we're not going to make the decisions that's going to please everybody in the county of Richmond, however, we will do our best to make the decision that's going to, I guess, benefit the county of Richmond. So just remember when we're sitting around this table that, you know, we're doing it not just for us, but for you as well. As you said at home, you know, obviously, again, we won't make everybody happy, but it's not only about making, making people happy, it's about making things fair, and that's what we all campaigned on, and I am proud of the, the council and the staff that we have working here, so, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Diggden. Okay. All right, so I'm not seeing my buttons lit up here, so, oh, sorry, Counselor Brent Sampson, yeah?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I'd be the bearer of bad news, I just think, we've had some missteps along the way, whether or not the cameras are rolling, but I think we have some work to do on staff relations and so on going forward, and I don't think that's an impossible hill to climb, but I think if we work together, we can get there, and I think we all want to see this go in the right direction, and hopefully we just keep moving onward.
Well said. Thank you. Okay, so next item on the agenda is National Veterans Week. So I added this because I received an email regarding National Veterans Week, which is of course coming up, it is the week of, you know, of Remembrance Day, November eleventh, and I wanted to just bring to the attention of counselors that the National Defense's National Veterans Week Speakers Program has developed a series of Canadian Armed Forces speaker videos geared, geared towards various audiences and age levels, which they are, I guess, promoting the use of in lieu of in-person presentations. They're going to start publishing those videos every day, starting October twenty-sixth is the information that I got from the program coordinator, and so I wanted to just open it for discussion and maybe find out from staff about National Veterans Week, is there, is there anything sort of being planned by staff, or do counselors have an idea about how we could potentially share these types of videos to honor our veterans during that week? So maybe I'll begin with you, Dawn, if, if you wanted to add any comments to that?
Normally, we would, we would place something in the reporter, obviously, the reporter asks us each year, so we do, we do place ads in there during Veterans Week, and that's, that's pretty much what we, what we try to accomplish.
Okay, thanks. All right, so any comments from counselors? I'm wondering, oh, sorry, Deputy Warden?
I, I think I'm probably going to say what you're going to say, which is maybe we could share some of these video links on our web, on our Facebook page as well, to just encourage people to, to check them out and get some exposure there.
Okay. Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say, was, you know, if those videos are being done, then perhaps we could, perhaps we could share them to the county's Facebook page. Counselor Sean?
Yeah, could we also share them and have Talal post those videos on Talal? I mean, there's a lot of people in Richmond County that watch Talal, and so I think, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
We could encourage Talal to, to just show them as well. And so what I could do is I could forward that email from National Defense to, to you, Becky, and, and that way, you could, you can kind of, Talal can coordinate with them directly, and in the meantime, Dawn, you know, just from staff perspective, I don't, I don't think there'd be any trouble sharing that information on our Facebook page, so I'll, you have the email already, and we could ask that, that those videos are displayed, especially during the week of.
I think I'd be.
It was in the package, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And, all right, so that's National Veterans Week. So the next item on the agenda was the rink revitalization program, and so I added this to the agenda because I, we had received an email from our M L A, Trevor Boudreaux, regarding the Nova Scotia Department of Communities, Culture, Tourism and Heritage announcing the availability of the rink revitalization programs for projects that can be completed between November two thousand and twenty-one and March first, two thousand and twenty-two. It's a program designed to assist municipal, you know, groups, including municipalities who are operating rinks, to invest in the infrastructure that will, I guess, help with the sustainability of the facility. The R R P grant is eligible for large or small projects, it includes infrastructure repair projects such as replacing boards, upgrading refrigeration, or improving seating or canteen spaces, and you can put multiple revitalization and repair projects, bundle them into one application. So I guess maybe I'll, I'll, you know, ask, as the C A O, you know, do, you know, is, at the staff level, do you think there would be a need and, and interest in pursuing this program?
Well, the only, the only problem that we have currently right now is that we only have two items related to the arena on our long-term plan, and one is accessibility improvements, which we have begun already, and we have created some, some infrastructure there to, to accommodate accessibility issues. There are still a few others that we're, that we are waiting on, and I think it may be, it may be that we're waiting on the accessibility committee and the whole plan to come, to come into play before we decide on what to do at the arena. The second project is the arena floor and the refrigeration system, and that's a massive undertaking that would, that would certainly not, not, not be, not be able to be done between now and March. Obviously, we have ice, and that's certainly a, an off-season type project. Other than that, we don't, we don't have any other projects in the queue. As far, as far as some of the maintenance issues that we have at the arena, we've, we've included those in our current budget, so.
Okay. Deputy Ward?
When I looked over the documents, and I'm just looking right now as well, but I, I don't recall seeing the need to have the money spent by a certain date, like, all I saw here was that there was final report, including proof of status received by March first, but I'm just wondering, does that mean that the project needs to be completed by March first? Did I, I'm not sure that I.
So that was the information I, I received from, from Trevor, like, because I just, I copied this out, or, actually, I think this is from, might be from the guidelines even, is that the projects can be completed between.
Right, like, when I looked through the, the guidelines, I didn't see a date that it had to be completed by. That doesn't mean that it's not, I just didn't remember seeing that, so I'm just thinking about what you're saying, Dawn, like, I agree, but if we want to do that work to the rink anyway, and if we don't have to have it done by the end of March, maybe it's something we should consider.
Oh, and I mean, we could get that clarification, certainly, so, you know, that could be something that we would ask staff to clarify, as if, as if the work needs to be done by that March first date. Would, would counselors be okay with that? Yeah? I'm seeing some nods. I think, too, if there's, you know, because this project, because this fund will include, like, small projects, I'm wondering if there's some of the maintenance-type projects that might be eligible that would basically, you know, if there, if there are things we've budgeted for anyways, could we access a cost share on there that would save us a few, a few dollars? So I'm wondering if we could maybe ask staff to look at what's, what's been planned in the current fiscal, and, and to see if there's an opportunity to offset with this rink revitalization fund. Yeah? Okay. All right, oh, sorry, I've got a lineup here, so Counselor Diggden?
Yeah, no, I agree, I was going to bring the same thing forward. Also, it says, you know, it may be something that we can look at, I know it's replacing boards, you know, refrigeration, but it could also be the outside or any upgrades to the parking lot or whatever, so, you know, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a big chunk of change if, if we're eligible for all of it, I guess, so it might be something we may want to look outside as well as inside for.
Right, and we would need, just need to be keeping in mind, we would have to have the other portion of the budget, right? So, and, and I know we haven't budgeted for large-scale things like that, so, but, but it's worth looking into, certainly. Deputy Warden?
I just wanted to say that I did see on the email that originally came from our M L A that it does say it needs to be completed by March first.
Yeah.
So it didn't say it in the, in the document, it did say it in his email, but I, I would personally like a little clarification, just to be sure. But I would agree, like, if we had some things that were capital-like, you know, that we would normally be calling a repair, perhaps we could, it might fit in there somewhere.
Right, okay. Counselor Sean?
Yeah, so looking at it, it says one grant per year. Is this something that's available every year?
So this is my first experience with it, but that's certainly something we could ask about, for sure. Okay, so maybe we could have a motion then to ask staff to confirm the, the timeline, investigate some opportunities to, you know, to offset our planned expenditures with this program, and to find out if it is an annual program. If we could have a motion to that effect? Counselor Sean?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Could I have a second, or please? Counselor Digdon?
Yep, I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye, aye? Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, thank you. So we have a review of action items from our September 27th, as well as the October 4th special meeting. So we're not gonna be reviewing those, just a reminder to council and to the public as to how that, how we wanted that process to work, because this is similar to our review of checks. And so if anybody has a question about any of those action items, you can bring it up now. But we're not gonna go through each of those items in detail. Deputy Warden?
So I, I just had a question on the action items from the September 27th meeting. And so one of them was to, for us to conduct a flag-raising ceremony, a ceremonial flag-raising ceremony in order, in honor of reconciliation of truth and reconciliation. And I just, I'm just wondering about timeliness, that, that's all I'm wondering about here, is it is listed as still being pending, but just, just curious in terms of if we've gotten anywhere with, with any parts of that, and if it's, if we should be removing it and planning it for next year?
Yeah, so I've had an initial conversation with Chief Wilbert, actually, the evening of the vigil in St. Peters, we talked about that. And we talked about the, having someone come in to discuss land, the land recognition and the land acknowledgement as well at the beginning of council. So we are still in discussions about that, I guess is, is how I would put it. I've chatted with several folks on their staff as well. So, so I think, you know, to your point, Counselor Sampson, the timeliness of that, you know, we may, you know, we may be into planning this for, for October 2022, but I personally would like to leave, let it sit there on the action items, just so that it gives us a constant reminder. And then when it does, you know, when, when we are at a point where we've got a concrete plan, then we'll have the reminder to bring it back to council, so. Any further questions on the action items? Deputy Warden?
I feel like I'm talking way too much, I apologize. Just the, the draft RFP, so I know that it said, you know, that we were to review it prior to our meeting, which was a month ago. And I know it was circulated prior to that meeting. And so we've not, you know, I, from the email threads, I don't, you know, I don't think anybody's provided any kind of update. So I guess the question becomes, like, what is our plan? We, we do need to get the RFP out for this strategic, you know, for, yeah. So just wondering where we are with that, and I feel like we need to set a timeline to either amend the RFP and put it out, or, or just put it out as it is.
Definitely, so just for the, I guess, to bring council of up to speed on the work that I've been doing on it, I've, I sent it to the Cape Breton Partnership to see if we could access a little bit of their expertise in terms of RFP development. They're, they're putting out an RFP quite often, you know, as our, as a development agency. And so I have received feedback from Carla that I've been kind of going through, and, you know, also sent it out to another member from a local community organization who has expertise in that field as well. And so I'm, I'm right now at a point where I'm bringing all that feedback together. So, I mean, my feeling is, I'd love to see this get out the door in November, so that we could have, you know, I guess, our strategic planning starting as quickly as January, or maybe even some initial work in December if possible. You would tend, generally, you would wanna leave an RFP in advertisement for two to three weeks. Two would be your absolute minimum on something like that, so. So that's kind of where I'm at with it now, and I don't know if councilors have had a chance to review and might have opinions on it. But I'm happy to kinda, I guess, sorta take the, the ball on that a little bit, because it is, it is an area of my expertise. And, but I do, I'm feeling the pain on the timeline, I, I would really like to get this thing out the door. Would council, I guess, be supportive of maybe mid-November to have a new, new version complete? That, I, I'd like to get it done next week, but I'm just not sure even the amount of meetings that we have in the evenings, so. Could I, was, is that kind of generally, yeah? Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions from the review of action items? Okay, oh?
Sorry, the only, the only one I have would be from the special council meeting October 4th, do we wanna remove that action item?
Well, we...
Or amend it?
Yeah, we ended up, it is the action item from the meeting, we did amend it in a subsequent meeting, and so the action items from that subsequent meeting will be, will reflect that.
Okay.
Do you know, so, okay. All right, okay, so we have several items added to the agenda. If there's no more questions on the review of action items? Okay, so we'll move on to Deputy Warden, oily waste sites, I think was the first item that you had added to the agenda.
Thank you. So this matter was brought to my attention by, by a resident probably a month ago, and the Director of Public Works had looked into it and provided some information, which I provided to that, to that resident, and then spoke with the MLA a bit about it. But I just felt, you know, this morning, we received an email from the CAO with some information that was provided by the Department of Environment and, and, or Department of Natural Resources and Renewables, apologies. And I just wanted to share a little bit of that with some residents who perhaps have heard about the oily waste disposal sites that have, that were on Crown, that are on Crown land currently, and which contain some materials from the Arrow and Kurdistan groundings from 1970 and 79. And I guess what I wanted to say to this is, there is a bit of a briefing of that, and, and I can provide more information to residents who would like to see it. But what's important is to understand that this is, this is an action that's being taken by the provincial government, and they're looking to create some roads into those sites, do some testing, just to ensure that everything is, is, to gather more information. So they're going to do, for example, in the McIntyre Lake site, they're gonna do five test wells to check that information. And what will happen is, once they do these test wells, they're going to send those results to Environment and Climate Change to talk about what other types of steps need to be perhaps done. And I think, again, what's important here is that this is not something that's happening specifically, you know, just in, in Richmond County. It's something that's happening across the province. And, you know, it's all in the, you know, for caution, right? And so we've also been provided with a phone number, and I'll, I'll provide it here tonight, cause I think it's probably relevant, is that for folks who may have questions or concerns about any of this, they could call 1-902-634-7554, and you'd be able to get more information. And in addition to that, the Nova Scotia website, the Province of Nova Scotia's website, if you would search there under Arrow or Kurdistan, you'd find some more information there as well. And again, I can provide some of that if anybody's looking for that. So just wanted to sort of bring it, bring it to the attention, cause I think we'll, we'll hear some things that will, through the rumor mills, I guess, and just wanted to direct the attention that this is a provincial government initiative versus a county-wide thing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, or sorry, Deputy Warden. I think the public will be really interested to hear that information, for sure. Any questions for the Deputy Warden on that? Okay. Next item on the agenda is over to Counselor Sean, I believe, regarding arena rates.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. So knowing full well that this was budgeted during budget deliberations, the arena rates and the new arena rates, for the past couple of meetings, we've invested in recreation with the Irish Acu Community Development Association and the High Fit Center. So I had a couple of residents concerned about the arena rates when it came to gentlemen hockey. So I would just like to, again, I, I know that we run the arena, the county runs the arena, and most times at a deficit, and it costs us more than the revenue we take in when it comes to, to the arena and the rates. So, you know, I, I know we're trying to justify, but again, I was just hoping that we could have an open discussion and maybe talk to Lurie in the future and see, see what we can do when it comes to arena rates for gentlemen hockey. Thank you.
Okay. So any questions for Counselor Sean on that item? Deputy Warden?
I, I just wanted to add that I did have a bit of a chat with Lurie about it, just, just chatting a little bit about where we were. I think there's maybe some public misconception that, that we also raise the rates substantially for minor hockey. And I guess I wanna clarify that we did raise the rates for minor hockey as well, but not to the same degree as we did for gentlemen's hockey. And, and I definitely appreciate the need for recreation in the county, and, you know, and hope that this does not affect the attendance of, of the gentlemen's hockey, gentleman hockey league. And I guess the other piece too is, is, you know, in speaking with Lurie, there hadn't been increases in a number of years, and it is, it's unfortunate that it's all at one time, but certainly, it's a good lesson learned, I think, by everybody that we're gonna just need to make things a little more incremental. But, you know, we did need to play a little bit of catch-up, as, as Counselor Sampson said, we, we need to be accountable to the rest of the county taxpayers who are paying for a lot of the shortfall that is happening at the arena currently. You know, like, there's, there's some grant opportunities right now for age-friendly communities that have opened up, and my mind kind of goes to, you know, perhaps there's something there that could help, even with the 55-plus hockey league or something. So, and again, Lori and I talked about a whole bunch of different ideas. And so I'm, I'm quite confident that he, it's well on his radar in terms of what could work to continue to encourage the gentlemen's hockey league, both the 55-plus and otherwise. And I, you know, I feel confident that he'll, you know, he'll do his best to, to provide some, you know, solutions if they exist.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further comment on that? Counselor Digdon?
Yeah, I guess I just have a brief one, and again, you know, as Deputy Warden stated, you know, we, we did do a fairly large increase, I guess, or we agreed to a fairly large increase, but as Counselor Sampson stated, it, it did affect the, it, it did and does affect the turnout for the gentlemen's hockey. I don't know, I can personally say that some of the teams have delayed their starting date, or their pickup hockey, almost a month because of the cost. Therefore, I don't know if raising the rate actually earned us any money or actually lost us money, because the ice, even though it's there, is not being rented out. So maybe something that we can look at and consider in the next year.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brent Sampson?
I think the only thing I'd say, I think we gotta remember too, when you're talking, an average group using it is what, maybe 20 people, would you say? At a time, like, something like that? So even the increase of $30 an hour, a buck fifty a person, it's not really all that much when you, when you really come down to it, you know?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brent. All right, thank you for the discussion on that, certainly valid concern raised. So thank you, Counselor Sean, for, for bringing it to, to the table and for the discussion. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Cape Breton Regionals, Cape Breton South Regional Healthcare Recruitment Committee has launched a series of awards, and I am super excited about this. So I wanted to make sure that all of councilors were aware and that the public was aware that as of today, Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health is, is accepting award nominations through their website, which is capebretonrecruiting.com. And I'm gonna be sharing that information on my social media pages, and perhaps, Don, I'll send that off to staff as well to share. So essentially, you know, the group had a lot of discussion about this. Certainly, the pandemic highlighted the critical roles that healthcare professionals play and, and the sacrifices they've made to our communities, particularly, like I said, during this last two years. So we wanted to be able to say thank you to healthcare professionals in the region. So we've launched a community of care awards campaign. And what it does, it will enable community members to participate by nominating healthcare professionals in the region that they think have gone above and beyond. So we've got several award categories, we've got Healthy Communities Leader, Mentor Champion, Lifelong Learner, Dedicated Mental Health, Long-Term and Continuing Care Professional, and a series of Healthcare Hero Awards. We've also got an opportunity where you can honor volunteer in the healthcare sector, call them Making a Daily Difference Award, or recognize an innovative business or organization in the medical field, call them Making Your Health Your Business Award. So all the details on those award categories are available, I think, right now on capebretonrecruiting.com. I would absolutely encourage councilors and members of the public to really think about who has been a shining light in your eyes in terms of, you know, with the health, maintaining the health and wellness of our community and our community members. So those nominations are open until November 19th, so you have some time to think about it. And then we will review, a selection committee will be struck to pick the award winners from within our Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health group, and then we'll announce the winners at a special event in December 2021, just in time for Christmas, so. So please spread the word. Any questions on that? Okay, so next item on the agenda is COVID testing. So Counselor Digdon?
Yeah, so I guess I'm gonna try, try and make this as brief as I can and as easy, easy as I can, I guess. So there's a little bit of conflicting information, I think, in, in what's being done or what has to be done. I know the Rich, at the Richmond Arena, and I'll, I'll go to that, the, the minor hockey. Anybody walking in for minor hockey has to show their proof of vaccination, which is fine, but now they also still have to write their name, phone number, and everything else. I thought the provisions from the province were, once you were double vaccinated, that the, so I'm just, maybe this is a question I can ask the CAO or, or to look into it, is it something that we can now move on from getting the names and phone numbers and everything else, since you are showing proof of your vaccination and...
Right, so each time, I think the provincial rule is you show your proof of vaccination, and you need to have some kind of ID or something potentially, if you're, you know...
Right, so, so, so your vaccination is your ID, and the scan, the scan barrier is out there where you can scan everybody's to double-check? The app is, actually, you can download it on your phone?
Yeah, that's right.
But, and I think Richmond Arena is the only arena that we, or, I should, sorry, I shouldn't say, I should say it's enforced at the Richmond Arena, I just wanna know that, is that something...
So there's something extra happening at the Richmond Arena with the collection of names?
So if it's minor hockey, let's say for the Peewees or the midgets, so, a midget representation, representative has to also sit there, get, write down your name, write down your phone number for...
Okay.
But I, I was under the belief that the, that that was the whole purpose of getting that second vaccination, and the barcode was so that you could eliminate that process.
Okay.
I know the Civic Center in Port Hoxbury doesn't do it, and, you know, the Member 2 Training Convention Center doesn't do it.
Okay, so we're still, we're still taking an extra step, I guess, is what I'm hearing, that's not required by the province?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, I mean, maybe we could ask staff to look into that, because my understanding was it was the proof of vaccination plus, you know, if you're, especially if you're not known in the community, you may need driver's licenses or something, right? Yeah, okay. So I don't know, Don, if you wanna comment on that, or if you wanna just look into it, yeah?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check in with Lurie. I, I'm, I'm not really sure exactly what that process you're explaining really is. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming it's for contact tracing. I know that people can be double vaccinated, and when you go into a restaurant, you're still writing your name and your phone number down, so. I think that's probably the purpose for that, but I will find out, and I will report back to council in an email, perhaps.
Okay, that would be great. Sorry, Counselor Digdon?
Yeah, so that was just one part, the other part I had was that, back, back a couple of months ago, I think it was, I believe it was posted on our website, it affected one young girl for dance lessons. And we posted it, I think, prior to the provincial posting. So the provincial posting stated that children 12, between January 1st, October 1st of this year, will have until December 31st to attend events and activities while they get vaccinated. Children after October 4th, 4th will have three months to provide double vaccination. But I do know that our, so I'm not gonna say our recreation department, I do know it was, I believe it was posted on our site that you could not attend event, the event unless you were double vaccinated. So I do know one girl was...
So for children 12 and, or under 12?
Under 12, 12, right.
Okay.
So I believe one girl was, I'm not gonna say refused or rejected, but more or less turned away because of...
Okay, all right.
I'm not really sure if that's the case, but I, I'm sure that the Recreation Department is following the protocols that were placed by the province and, and those that we had posted on our website. So I would, I would dare say that, that, that they followed what, the rules that they were supposed to follow.
So maybe we could just get some, you know, if you're gonna get some clarification on the rink process, that's... So maybe we could just, um, get some, you know, if you're gonna get some clarification on the rink, uh, process that's happening right now. Um, and if this, for this individual case, you know, um, I just, I'm wondering if maybe we could get some clarity on what the specifics were. Like, so she was turn, she turned twelve bit, in the last couple of months?
Correct, so she was, sorry, she was of age that she, uh, she still would've been able to participate in dance.
She would've had until December?
Correct.
Because she turned twelve?
But however, however, she was not permitted to participate through the County of Richmond regulations.
Okay, well, there, yeah, there may have been some kind of oversight there, misunderstanding or miscommunication. So maybe we could ask staff to look into that particular situation, but I think we would probably need to know, and I don't know if we want, I don't think we wanna say that here, but...
No, I'll reach out, I'll reach out to the parent to see if they're willing to...
Yeah, and maybe work with, uh, with, uh, staff on that one directly. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Diggden. Okay. Sorry, I'm just making a couple of notes. All right, so, um, I believe that brings us pretty well to the end of our agenda. We do have an opportunity for question period, which is restricted to the remainder, um, of the, restricted to the items on the remainder of the agenda following the, the committee of the whole. So I'll give it a minute or two to see if there's anybody with questions. We have a pretty light gallery this evening. So, um, the number to call is nine oh two 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 six nine eight eight five, and we will max that out at fifteen minutes. Um, but I will give a minute or so to allow for the phone to ring. Okay. So it's quiet, um, so maybe we'll move, uh, on to the next item on the agenda, which is an in-camera session that we do have scheduled. Um, so I'll accept a motion from councilors to move us in camera, please. Uh, Counselor Sean?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Could I have a second on that? Counselor Diggden?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried.